Good evening. Welcome to the Wednesday, June 12th meeting of the Chapacua Central School District of Education. We've been in executive session since 6:00 PM discussing employment history of a particular person, receiving advice from council, and discussing litigation. Do I have a motion to bring us back into public session?
So moved?
Second? Do you have a second?
Second.
I want a motion to leave.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Jane Shepherdson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, packed crowd today, which is great. We have, today is our last formally scheduled meeting, I believe we'll probably have another meeting or two between now and the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, to finish some signed contracts or other legal things you have to do. So I only have a couple of things for President's Report. One, as you drove in, the tent's up. That means graduation's coming. And I know it's a wonderful time in our district. And Friday night, Dr. Ackerman, Jane and I were able to attend the National Gun Violence Awareness Day at the Gisembo, which was very meaningful. We, on Monday, we had the senior awards at the, I'm not sure if I'm taking over.
No, it's fine.
We're, okay. We had senior awards in the afternoon, and the senior athletic dinner that Jason Simo, our athletic director, ran beautifully. And it was a great time for all the seniors, really congratulating them on their accomplishments. And that's all I had.
All right, so I'd like to begin by introducing Jason Simo, because we have another state champion. So we need to begin the meeting by recognizing Kira.
So it is my pleasure to, once again, recognize the state champion, this time it is Kira Lindner, who won the state championship in the discus on Friday afternoon up at Middletown High School. I will say, I've had the pleasure of getting to know Kira over the last two years, and she's one of our most dedicated athletes. You always see her around the fitness center, or in the cage, throwing, practicing. So really, this accomplishment is a testament to all of your hard work and your dedication. So I'm extremely proud of you. I know Mom and Dad are extremely proud of you. And thank you for the way that you represent our school and our community. Congratulations.
So, Kira.
I know one of the things they're going to want to ask you, a couple of questions. But tell us a little bit about that big moment. It was your first throw of the day, and 137.7, it was definitely very impressive. And really, she didn't have to throw another throw the rest of the day, because that was the best mark. So talk to us a little bit about that.
It was a little scary. It was my third state championships I went to. And my freshman year, I qualified for states, and I went, and it was really underwhelming. I basically failed out. And so I just, since freshman year, outdoor states, I wanted to come back, and I knew I wanted to win states at some point in the next four years. And I was really happy that I managed to do it, and I'm really happy all the practice paid off. And it just, it felt really good. I was nervous, but I overcame it, and I threw far. And it was really amazing. And I'm really grateful that the school, especially Mr. Simo, provided us with a really nice cage to practice in. So it was really nice being able to actually practice. Our old one was literally falling apart, the pole was like falling into the cage. So it was really nice to have a new one. And I don't know if he's, I don't think he's here, but James Howard, who was our outdoor coach this year, worked really hard to put everything together, and he did a really good job. And it made the season come together really nicely.
Great. So I have a quick question. What year are you this year?
I'm a junior.
So you have one more year to do this again, right?
Yeah.
No pressure, bud. So we'll see you next June then.
Hopefully.
Okay, good. And you're also competing in Nationals?
Oh yeah, I'm competing in Nationals this weekend. I leave tomorrow night to go to Greensboro, North Carolina.
All right.
All right, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So, Kira, we're gonna, we're gonna, so just one thing. First of all, I want the audience to know that I've seen Kira throw. And when people get up there, they throw, and then Kira gets up there, and everyone's like, "Oh, my gosh." No, because she just outthrows everybody. And I want to also share with you that, you know, as a group who's here all summer, Kira outworks everybody. And it's a real testament to your work ethic that you're standing up here today. And I'm really proud to be your superintendent. And I've also been able to say to my children, because they've been out there with me during the summer, that's how you get the job done. And it's really, you're like a role model for young women, and I want you to know that.
Thank you so much.
So what we'd like to do is take a picture with you. Okay? So come on up, and we'd like your family to come up too. Okay, so, tonight is such a bittersweet night for our district. We have the opportunity to acknowledge the great work of our retiring staff, many of whom have been here for more than half their lifetime, taking care of our students. The bitter part is, we are acknowledging staff who are leaving for purposes of retirement. Tonight, you're going to hear from our principals about how you have shaped the experience of our students for the better. And we are hopeful that you enjoy your retirement as much as we enjoyed having you be a part of our district. So, we will begin with the high school. Andrew Casilia, if you could please come up and introduce your retirees.
Sir?
And as your name is called, if you could please come up and stand next to Mr. Casilia, that would be great.
Okay. Thank you. I'd first like to recognize one of our retirees, Chris Petrelli. She's not able to be here tonight, but I want to recognize a school counselor who is retiring after many years of service to Chapacua. We have a couple of retirees who are here tonight, and I'd like to call them up and embarrass them a little bit, so I stand here. First, Maureen Callan, if you could come on up here, please. Chorus teacher at Horace Greeley High School. It's my honor to speak for Maureen Callan. I don't know if you know this, but Maureen Callan first intended to be an English teacher. And maybe that's why we get along so well. But nevertheless, I, and I think 20 years of Chapacua students, are thankful that she chose chorus. Maureen came to Chapacua in 1999 after having taught chorus to kindergarten through 12th grade students in Rochester for the previous 10 years. She took a sabbatical, she traveled to New York City, and she never left. Over the last 20 years, Maureen has been our choral director, teaching chorus, music theory, musical theater, electronic music, magical choir, treble choir. She's been like a one-person department. She served as department chair of performing arts, as a member of the Critical Friends Group, a member of the Innovation Fellows, and the Technology Fellows. Her contributions go on and on to the school. And beyond her own instruction, she's introduced her students to incredible experiences, including Carnegie Hall workshops, where students rehearsed with other singers from around the country, high school singers, and college singers, and adult choirs. They worked with prominent conductors, sang major works which truly challenged them. She's taken students to sing a music festival in Austria. God bless you for that, that's wonderful. Where they met with vocalists from different countries and sang in incredible venues. So can you imagine having that kind of experience as a high school student? If you want to know something about Maureen's chorus program, all you have to do is come to one of the winter concerts, where alums of the program return from college not only to enjoy the concert, but to wait for the moment when they can join the show to sing the Hallelujah course. So there you'll see students, and former students, spanning perhaps, I don't know, a decade, right? Joyfully making music together. There, you understand how important this program and this experience and Maureen has been to them. And through this, you begin to understand what Maureen means when she says that singing in chorus brings people together and provides them an emotional release during the school day. It's a way to connect with students on a human level, and it creates a home for them at the school. So in her classroom, she motivates students with an amazing combination of play, energy, and no-nonsense high expectations. In her classroom, you see students laughing and singing, pushing themselves to impress their teacher. And as a colleague, Maureen, thank you for your straight talk, your honesty, and for giving me some of my best ideas. So Maureen, I really want to wish you the best of luck, the new adventures. And on behalf of Horace Greeley, and the Chapacua Central School District, and our community, thank you for choosing our school, and for creating a home through music for so many of our students. I'm going to miss you.
I would like to shake your hand in the honor. Like, Maureen, right here, we're going to shake Warren's hand.
Yeah. It's always hard. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Maureen. Thank you so much.
Maybe before I call Kira up, I'd say, also joining us here is David Catalano. You've got some big shoes to fill with Maureen. He was being recommended to appointment to the chorus teaching position at Horace Greeley High School, coming to us from the University of Delaware, Cherry Hill, New Jersey. And he brings so much energy and enthusiasm to the kids, delighted us in the demo lesson. The kids really responded, "We're really happy to have you." And I have you know that you've got someone that you really have to fall on foot to follow. It's not going to be easy, David, but we're incredibly happy to have you as well. So I thought I'd stick there.
Maybe David, you can give a wave.
Give a wave.
Welcome to the district. We'll be appointing David tonight. This is a great transition.
So I'd love to call up Kira Kim, math teacher. Come on up. So it's my honor to speak on behalf of Kira Kim. She's been teaching math at Horace Greeley High School. So Kira joined the math department at Horace Greeley High School on September 3rd, 2000, after having taught in Queens for the previous 11 years. Since then, and for the last 19 years, she's taught Greeley students enriched algebra, standard algebra II, enriched algebra II in trigonometry, pre-calculus, enriched pre-calculus, and advanced pre-calculus, and calculus A. It's almost, it's almost nothing you haven't taught, right? She's advised a number of student clubs, including Team Up for St. Jude's Children's Hospital, and Cooking for a Cause. And I think this tells you a little bit about where her heart is. She loves math, she loves students, and she loves service. As Kira prepares to leave Greeley, she's leaving much more than a job. She is leaving a home. So until five years ago, Kira was a resident of Chapacua, having chosen to join the community and raise her son in a place that was safe and full of opportunity. Her son graduated from Greeley in 2010, he's now working in Massachusetts. And hers has been a career full of choices, choices that have led her here to Chapacua. She first came to the US from Korea as a student in 1984, intending to return, but found herself teaching in Queens, and then applying for her current position in Chapacua. And over the years, she's seen her student body grow and its diversity, and welcomes the strength that comes with the variety of viewpoints and experiences. Through teaching math, Kira believes that she's helping students to become stronger thinkers, breaking down complex problems step by step into their constituent parts, and ultimately improving our students' ability to make decisions. She speaks of the long hours that teachers must dedicate to their profession to be excellent. Arriving early, staying late, grading papers at home, it's a challenging career, always pushing to find a better way of instructing, of getting through to students, and it's exhausting. But Kira describes her source of energy as her students. This is a quote. "When I'm so exhausted, and I can't do anything, I stand in front of students, I feel excited and energized. I know the energy is coming from the students, from their sparkling eyes." She speaks not only of their contagious youthful energy, but of the demand that she be at her best when working with them. Kira is an amazing combination of humility, dedication, positivity, energy, and gratitude. Give her a minute, and you will hear her say five times how fortunate she has been in her career, to have worked at Horace Greeley High School, lived in Chapacua, and raised her son in this community. So Kira, on behalf of the Chapacua Central School District and our community, I want to thank, to say how thankful we all are that you've made the choices that brought you here to us for so many years. A better place.
And now, we will transition to Seven Bridges. So Dr. Mazza, if you could please come on up.
So if I tried to do this by myself, I wouldn't have gotten very far, I've only been here for a couple of months. But I did ask for students' input, as well as teachers, and some of those came from my entry interviews. So I'd like to start with Karen Baker. If you could come on up here, Karen Baker. So I came to know Karen right away, in the first week I was there, because literally, I think the second day I started, she put her letter of resignation or retirement. So try not to take it personally. But I've come to know Karen as a complete gift to Seven Bridges, to our community, to the school district. She is one of the most resourceful people I've ever met in my life, and I've found that in just a very short time at Seven Bridges. So she's been in Chapacua for 15 years. I hope I got all this right, by the way. Huge heart, very generous. If she finds that someone needs something without asking, she will go, and it will be down by that teacher either that day, or she'll have an email with a resource in it. Loves greyhound dogs. She's rescued them in the past, and maybe more of that is on the horizon for her. Very patient when teaching students with all sorts of needs. And most recently, she got a breakout EDU kind of movement going on in our school. So she's hosted several professional developments, after-school, job embedded. So she's really got a good portion of our staff excited and moving forward with things like that. Very, very good at her job. We're still interviewing to find a suitable replacement, and it's very hard. It's very hard to find someone the caliber who's leaving our building. Only wish I had more time with her at Seven Bridges. I could go on and on and on. She loves yoga. She's a Michigan Wolverines fan, so I didn't even get to Penn State season to have that banter going. Helped put together the Seven Bridges newspaper. On behalf of Seven Bridges and the Chapacua Central School District, we wish you congratulations. Thank you. She's unable to make it tonight, but she served our district for 21 years, and we wish her the best of luck in her retirement. So I'd like to bring Ray LaJudice up here, please. You said, "Let's go Mets." That's part of this. That's part of this, but it's also a part of, you have a sense of humor. So it's, it's my great pleasure to congratulate Ray LaJudice on his retirement, 28 years So again, I went out to poll students at lunch, and some teachers, so you just really don't have any idea what they're going to say about you. But they saw your class as one of the cool classes of the school. Lots of fun experiments, jack-o'-lantern blazes, hydrogen explosion, which I'm hoping they might set off an alarm in the school. Loved playing all kinds of music in class. Most of the time, it was, according to the topic of the day that you were studying. Loves nature, wants students to become stewards of this planet, which is so important, and more important every day. In fact, today, one of his infamous trips was the fourth and final day for our students to head up to Bash Bish. So long journey. If you look at our Twitter feed, and some of the pictures coming, our kids had the most amazing time. I'm almost thinking that that should happen in the beginning of the year, because they really seemed like they gelled at the end. But that trip, along with the Austin Water Treatment Plant, Froton Dam, great sense of humor, yes, a Mets fan, and I, again, I wish we had a little bit more time together, you know, have a lot of fun, have a good relationship with Ray. He's been a strong advocate for the teachers over the year as part of the, you know, the teachers' union. And of course, he continues to be a science department chair for our school. So as you can see, we're really losing a lot here this year, and our teachers coming in have some big shoes to fill. So on behalf of the Chapacua Central School District and Seven Bridges, we congratulate you.
So at Bell Middle School, we have five retirees, which immediately had me thinking about the George Burns quote with respect to a good sermon. Should have a strong beginning, a strong end, and they should be as close together as possible. So we'd be thinking about that. However, two of the five were unable to make tonight. That's Pat Mariello, she's a computer aide, 36 years at Bell.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. And Teaching Assistant Mia Zamachek, who spent the bulk of her time at Seven Bridges. This was her one year at Bell, but I believe had nine years in the district, so. So I'm going to begin by inviting Gail Fuld to join me here. We do a lot of kissing at Bell, let's just know. So Gail Fuld, who was then Gail Scherzer, left Norfolk, Virginia in 1979 to begin her time here. So you can do the math. Four years. Yeah, I think, yeah. Maybe the same, there's one other person in the district has a little more. With that said, I did a little detective work, and I noted, when I looked at Gail's resume, which would have landed on a former mentor of mine, Tom Cardilakio's table, that the resume read as much like a textbook around clinical work as it did as an introduction. And so as you read Gail's resume, you see the experience, the expertise in things like aphasia, and, I hope I get this right, Gail, apraxia, and one I'd never heard of, dysthuria, and myofacial, and cranial, et cetera. Sartreia, thank you. But I was quickly reminded how Tom Cardilakio, the then principal, would have noted this, and noted that expertise. And I'd like to begin by thanking Tom for his sixth sense in finding talent and bringing them to Bell Middle School. And he certainly did that in this case. Now, if you knew Tom, he was a little parsimonious with his praise. And for those of us who he mentored, we, a few crumbs were great, you know? But when I started to read Gail's file, I noted that the banquet Gail got from Tom, and how he talked about how noteworthy her practice was, how skillful she was, how the children responded, the strategies she used, I could go on and go on. So again, given the historic judgment and respect we had for Tom, it's clear that in Gail's service, that he was right. But in addition to Gail's work as a teacher, she was also the long-term union rep at Bell Middle School. And while Gail and I often had to sit at opposite sides of the table, I'd say much more frequently we got to yes than difference. And on the occasions that we did get to difference, Gail's ability with language, and her perception, and her ability to think through things logically, added to my great skills, allowed us to, allowed us to come through compromise and understanding. And what was really important for me to note tonight is, while Gail was there in her union role to represent faculty, Gail always did so with the best interests of kids in mind. And I know that from behind-door conversations. In addition, as we, I tried to close on this, when I think of Gail, I'm also reminded of Andy Rooney, and the thing he said about teachers. And he says that most of us are lucky if we get six or seven people who remember us. But teachers, they get thousands of students who remember them for a lifetime. And I've watched Gail's work, and I've seen her work with some kids with great challenges. I've received much praise about Gail over years from the community, and from her colleagues. She's certainly going to be a big loss at Bell Middle School. And Gail told me she arrived when the inkwells were still in the desks. But I know she's ready for the next chapter, and I will miss you personally, and I know the staff and the students will miss you too. So on behalf of the district, Bell Middle School, thank you so much for your service.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
So the next retiree that we get to honor, our pending retirement, is Barry Piero, teacher of instrumental music. So Barry arrived in Chapacua in 1993, and prior to coming to Chapacua, he worked in Peak School, in Chester, in White Plains, and in Scarsdale. So he brought a range of diverse experiences to the work. He also was of the Tom Cardilakio cohort, and I like to think that that's a stamp of great approval of actually excellence on teachers. And this was noted by me as I went through your file, and I saw your observations and the wonderful praise you have received over time from Tom, just like Gail. I think Tom had a sixth sense and knew when he had talent. But in addition to Barry's teaching talents, and the love the children have for him, Barry also has a great sense of leadership. And I know this because he's been the department chair at Bell for many years, and he's also served as the district chair for music for a number of years. And there's one example that I'll share with you of Barry's leadership that I think captures the essence of my point. So early on, as a department chair, Barry brought the art teachers and the music teachers, it was a music-art department, to, I think, Union Church in Pocantico Hills, with Mark Shigal windows. And that was real initiative and really mindful. But I spoke with the teachers to say, like, "Can you tell me about that experience?" And they talked about the nexus of art and music, and the importance of art and music to culture. And Barry's been a real advocate in the way that Ray for the environment, Barry for music and the arts, has been a symbol of excellence. But with all that said, however, I began to make a list of the top 10 things that I would like to say about Barry Piero. But I will admit that that list started to morph into the top 10 things I envy about Barry Piero. It might have even morphed further, and I'll leave you to think of the next category. So I'd like to share the top 10 things about Barry Piero. So the first thing, number 10, is that one time Barry Piero was voted the most handsome man at Bell Middle School.
That's true.
Amy, this is true. This may be even before you, Amy. Now, what Barry doesn't realize is that I continue to have to unravel the problem that created with the male teachers at Bell Middle School, but... created with the male teachers at Bell Middle School, but... Number nine is Barry Piero drives a real cool Mini Cooper. Now, again, I thought Barry was so dedicated that his pre-dawn arrivals were an evidence of that dedication, but now I believe it would give him the opportunity to park that car prominently so that everyone could see it as we arrived, and just stick it to the Honda Toyota driver, so that was probably... In addition to that, Barry drives, rides a Vespa through the back country roads in Connecticut. So, he's got a lot of European flair. That was eight, right? Number seven, Barry Piero can read Braille. And I learned that as a student in one of Barry's workshops, where he wanted us to experience what it is to be a novice learner. In addition, I learned later Barry was self-taught, so that's why that's on this list. At number six, Barry Piero can read tarot cards. Now, I was motivated by fear to not ask any more questions about that, but he certainly can do that. At number five, Barry Piero can play almost any instrument that he puts his mind to. And the reason it's on this list is Barry mentioned this to me very casually one day, and I must say, I still feel inadequate after that conversation, Barry, but his talents and music are amazing. At number four, Barry is very fluent in technology and with technology, and he has served as the school's webmaster, and can help troubleshoot technology issues for staff and for kids and for us administrators. Number three. Number three is, I'm losing my memory on it, but it'll come right back. I mentioned the most handsome man at Bell, right? We did that already, so I won't return to that one.
That's also number three.
No, yeah. It's actually number two. So, at number three, Barry has a niche expertise in ragtime music. And I believe you've done some compositions, and can speak almost on a scholarly level about that. He's got that passion and expertise. And that kind of captures Barry when he's sort of like one of those self-taught autotelic learners, and that's Barry. At number two is that, he was once voted handsome, most handsome man at Bell. And the one, and at number one, is the fact, and maybe why we are a little resentful of Barry, he's leaving us. And it's hard to imagine Bell in September with Barry gone. And I know this is true for staff and for students, because we have recently, as part of our search process, asked students' opinions of candidates. And every group says, "Mr. Piero's leaving? Why is he leaving? Is he not coming back?" And I think that's testament to your great work, Barry. So, on behalf of the district, Bell Middle School, me personally, thank you for great years of service, Barry. And so, the final candidate for retirement at Bell is John Kramer. John, can you join me here?
The second most handsome man at Bell.
Now, I have to admit, I don't, yeah, I haven't had a long experience with John because he just joined us this year. But John filled me in on a few gaps this evening, so I'll share those, because John said, "Oh, I've been in this district a long time," because he worked here at Greeley as a custodian.
I came to Chappaqua in 1966, I was four years old.
He's four years old, and showed me the tie as well. But I did a little forensic work and tried to find out what the opinion of John was and what legacy he had left at Seven Bridges. And I learned through reading, through observations and evaluations, that the common theme around John has been his flexibility, his kindness, and thoughtfulness, his collaboration, and his patience. And I have noted that clearly at Bell this year, as he works with students and helps them through daily challenges in a very patient and understanding manner. As I mentioned, John was at Bell for just this one year, and regretfully for us, he's decided to retire. And I think I was asking Dr. Mazza if it's okay. I think I can say, on behalf of the students and the community and the school at Seven Bridges, and on behalf of the students, the community, and the school at Bell, and on behalf of the district, we want to thank you for your service, John, and wish you the best in retirement.
Now, we'll move on to Grafflin, and while I know Carol is here, Debbie actually wanted to make the presentation tonight, so we welcome Debbie to the podium.
Grafflin has one retiree this year, first-grade teacher Yvonne Davies. Yvonne was hired by former Grafflin principal, Dr. Mike Kersh, in 1989 as a kindergarten teacher. During her 30-year tenure at Grafflin School, she has also taught ESL and first grade, where she teaches with the enthusiasm and energy of a brand-new teacher each day. Mrs. Davies' recommendation letters for employment described her as a person with strong character and an outstanding knowledge of early childhood development. One of the many positive parent letters written about Mrs. Davies is a testament to these qualities. The parent writes, "Mrs. Davies was a perfect match for our daughter's temperament. The atmosphere created in Mrs. Davies' classroom afforded her the opportunity to mature emotionally and socially. Mrs. Davies' recommendation to have our daughter participate in the kindergarten intervention program was very much appreciated. It was just what she needed. I, too, have witnessed Mrs. Davies' strength in character and knowledge of child development. When I arrived at Grafflin as a new administrator, I quickly realized that if I needed an honest and direct answer, Yvonne was the person who would always deliver. To this day, I admire that quality about her. I would venture to bet that any of her colleagues would say the same. Mrs. Davies has a wonderful way of speaking to children..." Excuse me, "speaking to children continues..." I'm sorry. "Mrs. Davies' way of speaking to children continues to amaze me each day. She always has the right words or the questions to ask the child to help him feel better, get back to work, or accept their responsibilities. I will always remember Mrs. Davies leading her class through the hallways, holding the hand of the child, leading her line, smiling, and often laughing with the child, yet at the same time looking back at all the other kids, smiling and reminding them, 'Stay in line.'" Yvonne, your ability to foster students' self-confidence, self-worth, and sense of responsibility is incredible. I would be remiss if I didn't mention Mrs. Davies' musical interests and talents. A few of her early-career professional growth documents describe her plans to collaborate with the music teacher to integrate rhythm instruments, body movements, and songs in her morning meeting and language arts lessons. You can walk in her class on any given day to find her and her students singing during transitions. It wasn't that long ago that Mrs. Davies assumed the responsibility for her grade-level performance. Remember that one? Yes, yeah. When an unexpected staffing change occurred at Grafflin, Mrs. Davies was insistent the show must go on as planned. She rallied her colleagues and students and presented a show that every first-grade student absolutely loved. Yvonne, I and all who are here this evening to honor your retirement wish you the best. You will be sorely missed at Grafflin, but you are sorely missed by Grafflin's students, staff, and parents. As one of your colleagues so elegantly stated, simply put, Yvonne Davies is a Grafflin legend. Congratulations.
You know the phrase "best for last," no more. Actually, it's W because West Orchard. So, good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to honor three retirees from West Orchard who collectively served students and the district for 75 years. The first retiree, Leslie Feldman, could not be here this evening, but she served as a, in three roles. We have six roles at West Orchard: administrators, teachers, teaching assistants, custodians, teacher aides, and there's one more I'm forgetting. But there are six, and out of the six, Leslie served in three, as a teacher aide, a teaching assistant, and then a teacher over her 24 years at West Orchard. So, I wish her well. She could not be here this evening. I am pleased to honor this evening Terry Zuckerberg, special education teacher, and Alice Dunn, teacher aide, as they set their sails for retirement. So, Terry, can you come on up? So, Terry joined us at West Orchard 17 years ago as a special education teacher, and prior to that, she taught in the Port Chester Schools in that same role. She's served students in all grade levels, kindergarten through fourth grade, and as a special educator, she works with our students with disabilities and learning challenges. And in the beginning of every year, she quickly learns about each student's needs and designs a program and appropriate instruction accordingly, so students feel successful and accomplished. Terry, in my time as a principal, I think is the strongest advocate for students that I've worked with. You know, special educators are constantly looking and trying to find the most support and the most time that they can provide instruction to their students. So, Terry and I often, in mornings in my office, "Do they really need it, Terry? Yes, he needs it, Jim." And those conversations would continue, but of course, in the best interest of students, Terry is always looking out to provide them with that. She strives each and every day to make sure students are cared for and nurtured with positive feedback about themselves and their learning. So, a parent wrote this letter I found in Terry's file. "Our son, Thomas, has had such a wonderful year of learning and growing under the guidance of Mrs. Zuckerberg. Although he has some special needs and requires extra assistance to stay on task and complete tasks, he has thrived academically. He is reading, writing, and solving math problems beautifully. Mrs. Zuckerberg has done everything in her power to see that he succeeds in school. Thomas truly enjoys coming to school each day, thanks to her." Terry, thank you for your 17 years of service to our students. And I think our final retiree this evening to be honored is Alice Dunn.
Actually, there are one more, but...
Oh, there's one more, sorry.
But that's okay.
Hey, Alice. So, Alice started as a teaching, a teacher aide at West Orchard in 1985, 34 years ago. That's quite a while. I was in high school. Well, there's a segue, because one thing I learned about Alice is she worked at the high school. So, West Orchard, back when we were starting to include students with all needs, had a student, Scarlett, who had some special needs and needed support. So, Alice supported Scarlett every single day from kindergarten through 12th grade. I'm just trying to imagine what it would be like to have another adult besides my mother and father to support me each and every day as a student, as Alice did for this very fortunate student. What a thoughtful and caring person Alice was and still is for our current and former West Orchard students. Now, I think the story goes that after the summer of Scarlett's senior year, you thought you were done. So, over that, the principal at the time, Bill Hoppick, called her over the summer and said, "So, you're coming back to West Orchard, right?"
About a week before school started.
About a week before school started. So, she's been with us ever since, every day. Teacher aide is a challenging job, trying to manage 100 students during lunch and recess. She does this without incident every day, and her students love her. A few years ago, I had to make a staffing change. Alice supported fourth-grade teachers for many years, and when I moved her to second grade, I thought it was going to be a riot. The fourth-grade teachers came to my office and expressed concern about the move, and this just illustrates the impact and the support that Alice has provided for her colleagues over these 34 years. She is a hard-working, efficient, and wonderful support to whoever she worked with. Alice, thank you for your 34 years of service.
So, I get to honor Sally Love, who was a senior office assistant in the special education office, and Sally actually retired in October, so we are thrilled to have her back tonight to help us celebrate her. So, Sally was hired to work in the special education department in the late spring of 2013. And if any of you know what spring is like in the special education office, she came in the midst of it all. Given her personable qualities and previous work experience, I knew that she would be a great fit for the department. Sally was a great asset throughout the years that she worked with us. She took initiative, had a strong work ethic, interacted with others in a professional and confident manner, and was a true team player. Sally learned her responsibilities very quickly, performed them accurately, and took it upon herself to create a work manual of her responsibilities so others could follow in her absence. She became so proficient in her responsibilities for preschool and elementary special education services that during her last year with us, she decided that she wanted to develop a different skill set and volunteer to oversee the operations, office operations of the high school CSC in Section 504. I warned Sally that she could never retire, but she didn't listen to me. Instead, the offer to move to France and care for her grandchildren while her daughter and son-in-law work somehow was more appealing than continuing to work in our office. And so, Sally left us in October to enjoy some free time in the States before her relocation begins. While we miss Sally greatly, she has left her mark. The processes that she put in place continue, and I can say without hesitation that our office runs much more smoothly because she was part of our team. So, Sally, may you continue to enjoy your retirement and all of the wonderful experiences that await you. We miss you, but we're so very happy for you. You will always be considered part of our team. You will always be considered part of our team.
So our retirees, you'll always be remembered for your accomplishments. Thank you for your years of hard work and dedication to our students, and congratulations on your retirement. We would like to take a group photo, so if you could please meet the Board of Education out in the hallway out there. And we're going to take a brief break, and we'll be back in here in five minutes to continue the meeting. Thank you. So I just want to continue my report before Adam talks about our summer program. I wanted to come back and begin by thanking Lisa for all our support and planning for a retirement event this evening. Lisa, thank you. A few more follow-up items from our last meeting. So the heat alleviation plans have been placed on the website for our families. We're in the process of ordering and securing all the digital thermometers in our rooms. So luckily, we haven't had a heat event that has caused the community to be concerned, but we are in the process of completing all of our goals that we set forth at our last meeting. The safety and security survey will be administered to the students over the next two days at Greeley, and we'll have our soft launch at the end of this week to the, to our, to our community at large. And then we'll administer the entire survey to everyone next week. And then we also have a, an administration for our staff. So we'll be presenting in July or early August recommendations from the task force based on the data we collect from our families. On the personnel part of the agenda tonight, you'll see that there is a recommendation to change Dr. McCarthy's job title to Director of People Personnel Services. We think that restructuring her job in this way aligns with our strategic planning process and also provides necessary oversight to our guidance department to adhere to the new regulations from State Ed regarding the elementary programs. So I appreciate Dr. McCarthy's willingness to take on added responsibilities in addition to retaining her responsibilities as the Director of Special Education. So with that said, I'd like Adam to share with you a brief presentation on some of our summer professional development offerings for our faculty and staff and administrators.
Thank you. So this is, this is exciting for me. My first presentation to the board was after I was hired, and I had to, had the opportunity to review all of the exciting professional development that we offered over the summer. So this kind of brings it full circle for me after almost completing my first year with regard to providing, the opportunity to provide a preview of the professional learning that we're going to offer this summer. So we're going to just run through and highlight some things, exciting offerings that we have for our teachers and teaching assistants, as well as our administrators this summer queued up. So as a lot of the organization thinks about closing the school year, the professional development team's really hard at work planning for professional development opportunities for our educators. And part of the, part of the hard work and magic of Chappaqua Central School District is to hire really talented educators, stockpile that talent, and then make sure they stay on the leading edge of innovation with professional development and opportunity to develop curriculum over time. I found this graphic from Sylvia Duckworth on ten things that teachers want when it comes to professional development. And it may appear to be intuitive, but we thought, I thought I'd put it in there because, because it gives us the opportunity to highlight some things that are really important to teachers. And some of them that I pull off there that we really take great effort in making sure that we provide are things like voice and choice for teachers, making sure that professional development is relevant and usable for them in their classroom, that it's innovative, that it's creative, that it models instructional practices that we'd like to see, that it's practical, and that it gives them an opportunity to collaborate with educators and colleagues. Because as you know, teaching can be a very isolating profession because it's often done in classrooms individually. So this gives us an opportunity to bring teachers together when we provide the professional development that we do. So you can see some of the shifts. We have this hashtag, #PDdoneDifferently. If you, if you type that hashtag into social media, you'll see some things that we have done this year that are different and innovative when it comes to professional development. And you see some of the highlighted shifts up there. This summer's going to be a little bit different than summers past because we are focused on the five strategic priorities that came out of the strategic planning process last year. And we've got a mini-conference structure, which is going to allow us to make more interdisciplinary connections that we had in the past. And we've taken, taken great effort to make sure that the opportunity that teachers have is personalized, so they have a lot of choice within that mini-conference structure. Again, that we're modeling the kind of teaching and learning structures that we'd like to see in our classroom, and that they have a lot of voice, choice, autonomy, and opportunities to collaborate. So we also did some work branding. Most of our professional development over the summer is voluntary, and we have teachers sign up and register for things that are interesting to them. So you see on the left some of that new branding. That was our save-the-date flyer that went out in the winter so teachers could plan vacations around professional development opportunities that they might want to take. And on the right side, many of those names are familiar to you. Those are the different structures that we have used in the past and that we'll use going forward to provide PD for our teachers. And this, and I know that the text on this slide is small. I just wanted to give you a sense of the number of opportunities that teachers have and the different types of opportunities that they have. I pulled, pulled a few of these off of the list in the next few slides so you can see some of the highlights. But I just wanted to give you a sense of the volume of professional development that we provide. You see the dates, some of them are one-day opportunities, others are multi-days. And then you see the number of participants on the right side that we have registered. And the few that we have TBDs are things like New Teacher Launch, which is an orientation for our new teachers, and New Teacher Institute that we offer, a podcasting which registration is still open. Many of these things, the board has approved various presenters and consultants that we use to support this work. I thought I'd highlight one, one piece that we're doing new called Base Camp. This picture was actually from a professional development opportunity that was a regional, regional opportunity down in Bronxville. And you see several of our teachers in this picture that you probably recognize. Carolyn Elwood, Amanda McDonough, Andrea Shaber, and a few others were, were there. And during this conference, we came together with some regional innovative teachers and leaders from around the region, and we sketched out on the whiteboard just a really rough sketch of this idea that we were calling Base Camp. And we kind of mapped out a really quick agenda, what this might look like. And fast forward a couple of months, and what we did was we took that, that rough sketch and that idea from a bunch of regional administrators, and we created an opportunity that's going to be held here at Greeley, open to the region educators from around the region on June twenty-seventh. It's innovative because it, it, we're not having any experts that we hire for this. It's really just bringing in the expertise from around the region and giving them opportunities to present and share best practices. So you can see what that agenda has evolved to be on the left side, and then the palm card flyer on the right side. At this point, we have about fifty teachers from Chappaqua signed up for this, and we have nearly a hundred in total educators from around the region that'll join us here at Greeley for that opportunity. We also have some leadership development planned. You can see we have trips for our leaders to Microsoft New England, which is one of their research and design facilities up by MIT. We're also visiting the MIT Teaching Systems Lab. And you can see by the quotes that are there that they align pretty well with much of the work that we're doing here as a district when it comes to seeing the future first and imagining the K-12 systems that prepare for it. Wanted to pull a couple of, couple of events from July to highlight. As you know, we're opening STEAM centers in both of our middle schools, as well as a STEAM building at Greeley. So there's a concerted effort by the PD team to make sure that our educators are ready to use those facilities across the curricular areas. We also have a recommendation that came out of our Tri-State's review to reopen this Collab Academy, which was an academy for teachers that work collaboratively with each other to support students. And so Dr. McCarthy has been leading that work. And so I understand that a number of years ago, we had a Collab Academy, and we have refreshed that and brought that back. That was a recommendation from Tri-State. So we're going to have that offering over the summer. And then August highlights, we pulled a couple. We have literacy dot next, which is a kind of next step in literacy instruction, as well as our tech forum. I know the board's very well aware of the technology rollout, especially focused on particular grades in the elementary school, but also the full-scale Microsoft rollout in the middle school next year. So that's designed to support our middle school teachers. And then I just wanted to highlight a few opportunities for our new teachers on the left side. We have a three-day New Teacher Launch, which is an orientation, as well as a full-day Institute, which is a crash course on our, on teaching and learning in Chappaqua aligned to the Vision and Goals documents that we have. And then we also have chair retreats scheduled for all of our teacher leaders, as well as grade-level leaders in the elementary school. So those dates are typically chosen by the principals, so they, I just gave you kind of a range of dates that they'll be working within. Just as a reminder, we have our superintendent conference day on August twenty-ninth. So all of the faculty, faculty teachers and leaders and educators will be back on the twenty-ninth, and we'll welcome them back. So we're doing some thinking about how to structure that and make sure we kind of launch into next year with, with energy and excitement. And that's a preview of our professional learning opportunities for the summer.
Did you have questions for Adam?
I do. I actually have a statement. And that was not, your first presentation to the board, whether you knew or not, was to me, Vicki, and Christine at a southern, at a northern Westchester Bowses thing, where you still might have been teaching in a different district.
That's true. That is true.
I just want to acknowledge the amount of work that Adam does on behalf of the district with the PD team to really create some cutting-edge professional development for all of our staff here in the district. I mean, it's so different from anything I've ever experienced, and it's really high-level, high-level opportunities for our staff to be better professionals for our children. And I just want to acknowledge him publicly for the good work that he does in Chappaqua. I'm so happy that Adam joined us from May of Pac. We are so much better because of his leadership. So, thank you, Adam.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I just, I do want to say something. I really want to thank you, Adam, and your, the entire team for all of this work. And I just want to say that even though you're new to this district, this is very much in, in our district's DNA. The emphasis that we put on professional learning here is perhaps more than what is put in other districts. And with all of the new spaces coming online, the innovative learning spaces, really what we had committed was to have the professional learning be a priority. So I just want to go over this again because it bears repeating, that these spaces are really not the point. The whole point is the teaching that goes on in those spaces and the preparation that goes into all of that. That has been going on here for years, but you've added just exponentially to that in the creativity and innovation that you, Christine, and Tony, John supporting the finances, and Joe helping, and the whole team is, is really superb. And you've done a tremendous job. And I, I just want to say it's very much in keeping with what we value here. And I want to thank you for, for all of the work you've done.
I agree that, that since Adam came here, every meeting we've had, every, every discussion about curriculum, professional development, strategic planning, Adam is always so prepared and focused, and focused on the next great thing that, that can be here for us. And, you know, it's just been a pleasure working with you this year. And, and we can all see the benefits that our children will reap from all the, all the work that you've done on the curriculum and the professional development. So thank you very, very much. It's been a pleasure.
Only I would say is, you guys have only been here a year.
I know. It's hard to believe.
Adam, I just wanted to say that this is really exciting. It makes me want to go do some of these. The marketing is impressive. But the content in there is even more impressive. It's responsive and it's innovative. And I really look forward to seeing what we, what we have in store for the next year, too. Thank you.
I do want to say that I, I'm fortunate to be the spokesperson of a really powerful team. So this is, I appreciate the kind words. This is really the work of a lot of good thinkers. You know, a lot of teacher leaders that are on the team are building administrators, teachers. Teachers provide a lot of the professional development for each other, so this is a real, a team effort, administrators, et cetera, so.
Oh, and I do want to say in particular, this, what is it called? The Base Camp, where we have other districts coming in. I'm really excited about the collaborating with other districts in the region. I think it's really important because we're very fortunate here in Chappaqua, and certain districts are not. We really have a lot of diversity in the district. And so I think it's really important to, to share what we have and to collaborate. And we, you know, we can learn a lot, too, from others. So I'm very excited about this whole huge collaboration.
I'll add a shameless plug. If you go to the, to the presentation, there's a QR code. And if you use it, which I just did, I just signed up on Eventbrite for the Base Camp, so, neither of them are there.
So that, Base Camp, the agenda is open in terms of regional innovators can plug in workshops. So that, that agenda is being built in real time as people sign up, and there's some real talent. I know many of the educators that have signed up to run sessions. So our teachers will have access to some real forward-thinking work that's being done around the region. We partnered with many districts to plan that. So we happen to be hosting it, leading the planning, but it's going, it's going to really draw in some, some really good thinking from the region.
So usually in September, we do a recap of our summer work. So we'll be at the tail end of this, and we'll share with you how it all played out. Okay?
And the only habit is, I truly appreciate when, during the summer, you include the board in some of these professional development. Because we want to learn also. We're all lifelong learners, so. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay. We'll move on to committee reports. For the audit committee, we'll be, we spoke about the last meeting, we had an audit committee meeting, and we'll be looking to pass a resolution to accept the internal orders report tomorrow. And that's it for that.
And for policy, we have the policies on the agenda, so we'll be discussing them at that time. In communications, we are, we're going to be setting up a meeting, so we'll have something to report perhaps at the, at the next meeting.
Facilities? Facilities, if we don't have anything to report, put some shows here in Joanna here. I'd like to thank them before I thank them again. For years of service in the Facilities Committee, you're making my life as a board member on the Facilities Committee easy.
I do want to add one thing. We do have a Facilities Committee meeting scheduled for next Thursday, a week from tomorrow. At five o'clock at the S Center's open meeting.
Great. Okay. Thank you, John. Okay. Now we'll move on to public comment. We welcome public comments in respect for each other's time. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone. After comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding comments presented. If please, if you want to make a comment, please come up and state your name.
Good evening. My name is Nishat Hadari, and I'm a parent of a Greeley freshman who went to Seven Bridges. I also have a current fifth grader at Seven Bridges. When my freshman was at Seven Bridges, she had Mr. Gittleman for sixth and seventh grade, and she was in the advanced algebra in eighth grade. Currently, she's in grade nine honors math. My daughter said the curriculum at Seven Bridges was easy, and she didn't need the extra review day. So instead of being bored, she was able to go to Mr. Gittleman, where he provided challenging math problems, which allowed her to think critically. It was a different approach to math learning because it allowed you to figure out math. This helps her currently in grade nine honors math, where her teacher asked her to figure out the problem the problem before he explains it to the rest of the class. My current fifth grader does not qualify for Mr. Gittleman's class, but I'm still thankful for and support Mr. Gittleman. One day a week, when my fifth grader's classmates go to Gittleman, she and the rest of the students get extra help from their math teacher. It's due to Mr. Gittleman that my fifth grader is getting As in math since the first quarter of fifth grade. I understand the district is trying to be inclusive, which sounds great, but in reality, the model of pulling out kids once a week for enrichment with Mr. Gittleman is the best way to achieve this inclusive goal. Mr. Gittleman's enrichment model helps both the advanced and the average student. Everyone at Seven Bridges loves and admires Mr. Gittleman. Mr. Gittleman has volunteered his time to expand the mind of the next generation, and I sincerely hope, no matter what direction the district goes in, that Mr. Gittleman is included and stays at Seven Bridges. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nadia Abiel. I'm a freshman at Greeley, and I had Mr. Gittleman in sixth and seventh grade at Seven Bridges. And me and a lot of other students didn't really feel challenged in math class, and we didn't really need the review day, as was previously mentioned. So, Mr. Gittleman really offered us more challenging material. And what was really special about this was that it wasn't just, we're, just like in math class where we're learning the material. He really challenged us to get math, and then we had to try to figure it out, and he would explain it to us at the end, which I think is really helpful because this year in Math nine honors, we're focusing a lot on, before he explains it to us, he challenges, challenges us and sees what we know, and can we figure out this math. So, I think that that's really important. Like, even on the tests, we're challenged to not only use the concepts we learned in class, but also to try to figure out additional concepts, and try to, you know, think a little bit outside of the box. So, I think men establishing that kind of extra understanding and, and at an early age with Mr. Gittleman was really helpful. And in addition, we also learned how to use spreadsheets. And this was really helpful in money and, and investing this year. And everyone really loved him. I know all my friends really enjoyed working with him, and we felt really challenged. And I wouldn't really want any other kids to miss out on this. And one of the projects I remember really fondly was a stock portfolio. And we followed this out, we followed this throughout the entire year, and we kind of had the stock game, and so you could make the most money. Is it okay if I give this out?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Can you give it to Mr. Clerk? Give it to, give it to, over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Atai Baron. I have twin daughters at Seven Bridges. They are both in sixth grade. One daughter is, qualifies for Mr. Gittleman's, the extra help that, or rather, the, the, the
Enrichment.
enrichment that she gets from him. You know, we have obviously, and Mr. Gittleman a sincere volunteer. I presume that's something that y'all want to encourage. Whitney, my daughter, who is in the, in that enrichment program, feels inspired. She enjoys it. It, it not only builds her confidence, but gives her a great sense of joy. My other daughter requires extra help. And initially, I, I was sort of thinking about it from, from my daughter, who's in that program, from her perspective, and said, well, you know, why are we taking this away from her? After speaking with my wife, we sort of reconsidered it and, and said, well, our other daughter, Casey, actually is able to get a little bit more attention, because if you have some kids who are moving to Mr. Gittleman's program, and that sort of frees up some time for the teachers, and frees up some resources, that they can focus on the kids who need that extra help. So, two very different perspectives, but I think equally relevant. So, I'm clearly hoping that, that you'd consider, reconsider if you've already made your decision to, to cancel the program. And if, if you don't reconsider, I think the community deserves a really clear, concise, transparent reason for why this program is, is being removed or shut down. Thank you.
Hi, I'm, oh, hi, I'm Phoebe Baumback. I am in Mr. Gittleman's math program. Since it started, it's been nothing but great. Before this started, I was a little bored every Wednesday, when some of my peers and I would not need extra help on the topic, and other kids did. When I heard about Mr. Gittleman's class, I remember what my two sisters had said about it, and immediately hoped to be in it. After I got in, every Wednesday was fun, but also taught me things that I would have never been taught this year, like the Fibonacci sequence, making stock portfolios, and learning cool card tricks. Even though sometimes the stuff was hard, it was always a good challenge. Mr. Gittleman is so great that he made weekly challenges, so the kids that were not in his class could have a brain teaser, too. Every Wednesday, everybody in the class would want to have math, because we would get an extra challenge, and the kids that don't, don't, are having struggles with that topic can get extra help and more attention. When we did have math, all of us were happy and some good cheer. I hope that I can have it next year, too. Thank you for letting me in.
Hi, I'm Temma Baumback. I have three children currently in the district, a fifth and eighth grader at Seven Bridges, and a sophomore at Greeley, and one district alum who just completed his first year of college. Having three children who benefited from Mr. Gittleman's program, and one who would have loved it if it existed when he was there, I really am shocked and disappointed to hear that there's even consideration to terminate it. Our district has a fantastic math program, K through 12, as you well know. There are outstanding teachers at every level, and their goal is to make math understandable to all students. We've had at least four math programs that we've used since my kids started in the district in 2005. Our teachers have tons of methods and researches, resources to help make math make sense to a variety of learners. Those who struggle with math, there's tremendous support given outside of the classroom, before school, during school, after school. But for those students who enjoy math, and who are successful without a lot of effort, there's really enough, there wasn't anything available to present a challenge or engage them in deeper thinking. As many said, they were a little bored during the Wednesday's review. So, five years ago, when my oldest daughter came home talking about this class with Mr. Gittleman that I had never heard of, I was thrilled to see her excitement. Since then, I've seen all three of my daughters share regularly about the ideas and problems that he teaches, how they came to or are still working towards solutions. Be it watching stock prices and predicting futures, to cutting a piece of paper into every letter with one cut, magic tricks, so much more. My daughters come home discussing this, sharing with the family, working on the problems with their siblings for many days following the class, and I love witnessing it. I mean, it's the goal, to enjoy, to instill a joy of learning in each and every student. And in his class, these kids are motivated to learn for learning's sake. They're not doing it for grades, there are no grades. They're not doing it to get into a better section, there isn't anything else. They simply enjoy the mental stimulation and weekly challenge. And it's like an educational utopia. And I just want to be clear, because the magic in this class is not the material. It is 100% the teacher. Mr. Gittleman is the it factor that makes the students excited about the material, the process, and gives them the desire to keep striving for the answer even after the period ends. And in the past five years, I have never heard one controversial thing about him. I've heard praise from students, from teachers, other math teachers, from principals, from parents. So, I really have no idea why this is being considered. But I really hope that you think about what our district mission is when it says that we want to allow, and provide a challenging curriculum, a diversified faculty. We want to foster creative and critical thinking. And I urge you to keep that in account, because his program is the only one that provides a challenging curriculum for some students in middle school math. It absolutely fosters creative and critical thinking. And it would be a real loss for current students and future learners for this to be eliminated. Sorry.
Thank you for your thought.
Okay. I'm not a public speaker, but I am a Greeley graduate, and I've been here my whole life. My brother, everybody's Lori Rubin, but I was Wiesnfeld when I graduated. Anyway, um, I think there's some, it may be the board, I'm not 100% sure of what everybody knows and what everybody doesn't know. But, a lot of, just in case some people don't know, Mr. Gittleman's daughters graduated Greeley. He's a long-term member of Chapacaw. He does this program completely free of charge to help the community. And he did this in tandem, not only with the Seven Bridges faculty, with the faculty. So, they created the curriculum to allow that four days of the week, I think in fifth, sixth, and seventh grade, if I remember correctly, from my oldest daughter, and now my youngest son, my middle son, sometimes qualifies, sometimes doesn't. But, the four days, they teach the curriculum, and then the fifth day is the review day. And the review day, when my middle son sometimes qualifies, it's very helpful, because half, a third to a half the class goes to Mr. Gittleman, and he gets extra time. And, you know, when he qualifies, he comes home with the most fabulous things, game theories, things with sticks and pens, and things that he's actually really interested in. So, I just want to make it clear, because I don't think anybody really spoke about the financial aspect. It's completely free to the district, and it's something that's incredibly popular. And if I, I think I've found out recently that he's also has a similar program going on in Yonkers. So, other districts are taking advantage of this. And yet, we're kind of saying, why, why would we have a man who's lived in our community and has been, I mean, who, who I think many people go to Temple with, and know him personally, including my father, has been friends with him for 30 years. I mean, so, I, I think that it's almost insane that it's, it's a question to not allow this to continue. So, anyway, so I hope the facts, we didn't really, I hope some of these facts help clear it up. Anyway, thank you.
I'm not talking about that. I'm sorry.
I feel like I should be talking about that. I'm here, my name is Karen Basic, and I'm one of the parents for the native plant learning garden. Sorry. And I'm here because next week is Pollinator Week, and we're inviting everyone, and of course you, to come on the 22nd on Saturday at the farmer's market. We're going to have all of the groups in town, which includes the Harris Greeley High School Native Plant Learning Garden. They are to celebrate the work that we're all doing to promote our pollinators, which are bees, and also our plants. And I know this program is having an impact, because when I went to the art show the other night, I didn't take a photo of my own child's artwork. I took a photo of four, four, which is terrible, four other students who had done artwork around native plants, specifically the lowly dandelion. And this is not one of them, that would be larceny. But, I, I'm impressed that the students are learning about it, and it's so important to them. And one of the students came up to me and said that she was doing a painting using invasive plants. So, clearly, the message that we hope is getting out to the students. Thank you to John Chow for, who has been supporting us in having expansion of our program. We not only have the courtyard garden, but we also have in the front, we have, they have transplanted, and we're continuing this work, because it's very important. So, we hope you'll come out. And if, I, just two more things. I don't know what my time limit is. I just want to, I would like to lift up Mrs. Zanicek, who is one of the retirees. She was a teacher's aide. I would say Dr. Affman, to seek her out and to talk to her, because I had a very personal relationship with her. She worked very hard with my son, who had become very disconnected. She helped him to get reconnected. She found his interests, and, which was at that time, he was obsessed with malls and stores, and he wasn't socializing. And she helped to find him a group of six girls who were very interested in that topic, and he had lunch with them. And it was very meaningful, because he was able to reconnect again with other students. And, and
Thank you.
And when he was in elementary school, we had had a birthday party, and none of the kids from his class came, which was very hard for him. And they, you know, they said, well, it was very hard. And then, so for a parent like me, where he goes in and the girls in that group threw him a surprise birthday party, that was very, very meaningful. And I just found the card the other day by coincidence, that they had all signed. So, yes, I have to go. That's fine. So, I just would say to seek her out.
Thank you.
Because it's a very special day.
But Karen, I just want to, Karen, I want to thank you and your families for the gift to the native garden.
Oh, well, we just got to keep doing that work.
Good evening. My name, my name is Madhu Bhagali. My son is a seventh grader at Seven Bridges. My daughter is a third grader, west daughter, here to talk in support of the Math and Ritual Program run by Mr. Gittleman. On a personal level, my son has benefited greatly from this program. Initially, the material in the curriculum, the board made him disengaged, and as a result of Mr. Gittleman's attention to this program, his level of engagement greatly increased, the sense of wonder, creativity was greatly enhanced, and he's overall a more engaged student in the regular curriculum after receiving this enrichment. And I would, I'd like my daughter to have the same opportunity when she gets to Seven Bridges. On a more general level, I speak on behalf of all the parents here today who are in support of the program. And I'd like to say that attention has been focused on how students are removed from the classroom for a small portion of the time, to focus on this enrichment program. I'd like the board to consider the other side of that equation, where as a direct result, as a direct benefit of this enrichment, students who go through this program become more engaged learners in the regular curriculum itself. And I think that's the truest benefit of this program. It doesn't just take students out of the classroom. It makes them better learners of the curriculum at large. And I'd like the board to recognize that, recognizing this is an educational model that has had great success over decades and it's been in place. And I'd like that to continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alex Patashner. I have a 10th grader and a 5th grader. My 5th grader's the first one to have the opportunity to work with Mr. Gittleman. I'm certainly grateful to be here to listen to what everyone else has to say, and share our thoughts, and for you all to listen to our thoughts about it. I think tonight's a wonderful night for me to be here, because I got to witness you all honoring teachers, you know, admirable people who have contributed to the district, to our children, and to the community by teaching them. Now, these were hired teachers that you all are honoring, but I think we want to recognize Mr. Gittleman, who is not hired, but still deserves that level of credit in what he's done for, for at least my 5th grader, and I think others who have, you know, preceded her. I, I don't know where to start. I think that all of us are going to sing his praises. I'm here to certainly join the chorus. I, we can give you all anecdotes of our personal experiences about how our children have done well with Mr. Gittleman. On my personal level, my daughter had trouble with reading. She had to get reading tutoring. And she's found a place, a home in math. She's excited about math. This has nothing to do with how much she loves her 5th grade math teacher, Ms. Weldon, and what a great experience she's had with her, and as I expect she'll have with math in the future. It's not a criticism on the district or with the core program the district has created. That's not any of our issues. It's that, you know, from, for example, my child wants to have a special opportunity. She wants to do more math. I mean, we had a snow day, and it was on a Wednesday, and she was disappointed that she didn't get to see Mr. Gittleman. She said this to me. I mean, if you can imagine, if you remember what snow days meant to you when you were a kid. So, I, I don't think there's any question about what he's done for us. I think the question we have to ask now is, what, why is this a question? Why is this a problem? Why is the board, Dr. Mazza, why are we even questioning this? You know, all of us come to this community, to this district, because of what Chapacaw schools represent. We look at the, you know, various US News and World Report, and this data and that data about what the Chapacaw school district is. I cannot imagine in any way, shape, or form, how we cannot continue to support and show respect and gratitude to this individual who has volunteered his time, you know, week in, week out, year in, year out. I, I mean, frankly, I, I think that we have done him a great disservice by the fact that we even have to have this forum. I, I can't imagine how this gentleman must feel when he has given his time, year in, year out. And he does thrill the children, and they don't have to compete for grades or anything like that. It is pure learning, learning for learning's sake. How often do our children get to have that opportunity? How often do our, my children, my 10th grader, even my 5th grader, oh, I've got to get this done and turn it in on canvas, blah, blah, blah. It's all important. Of course it is. All right? But how often do they get that chance? I can't understand why this is even happening. And that's really where we're shocked. I'm shocked. I don't even know what I will tell my daughter, if you don't continue with this program. How can I, how can I hold my head up and say, my school district, the, the community we chose, I'm sorry. Thank you for letting me speak my word.
Are there any other comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Any comments from the board?
I would just like to share, I'd like to thank everyone who came to speak tonight, especially our students. I'll take your comments under advisement, and I'll share a decision out regarding this issue by the end of the school year to all of our families. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Affman. So, a few days ago, I saw an article on the origins of the unit of a dozen. So, it said, pardon me?
Unit of one.
Of a dozen. So, in early Mesopotamia, they were saying that you can count on one hand to a dozen, because there were three joints in each finger, times four fingers, so one, two, three, four, five, six, to 12, which I thought was pretty interesting. Maybe I didn't learn that in school. But that's interesting, because that unit can be broken down into a half, into a third, into a quarter, into a six. Then they were talking about baker's dozens. And baker's dozens, I didn't know this, in the 13th century, a law was passed, and they said that, I'm going, I'm getting somewhere with this, so.
[laughing]
So, with the baker's dozen, they said that the bakers were held accountable if someone went into the bakery to buy goods, and it wasn't what they, what, it was short, there was short change, the baker would be considered theft, and they would get their hand cut off. So, that got me into thinking about what other things came in dozens. So, I got, I got to show you, tell you.
Mm-hmm.
And there are plenty of these things. The things that come in dozens are Eggs, thank you, John.
[laughing]
Thank you, John, you're a true brother, isn't it? They might be scrambled at this point. They might be scrambled at this point. No, they've got 12 eggs here. Other things that come in dozens are
Banals.
Pardon me?
Banals.
Diet Coke. They come in 12 vats. I know, beer comes in 12 vats. We can't bring beer on board meetings.
No, we can't.
Golf balls would normally come in dozens. So where I'm headed with this is, that got me thinking, like, you know, a case of wine comes in a dozen, right? Oysters come in dozens. I couldn't bring oysters because that probably would stunk, literally. Jeffrey Mester's service on the Chappaqua School Board has been an even dozen years. From 2007 through today, he has served as a trustee of the district. See him getting there. We as a board and administration would like to recognize him for his service. Jeffrey served with five superintendents and interim superintendents, right? Three district clerks. One, one business official. Who I think, I think they started about the same day or something like that. Another interesting fact is that over the past 12 years, Jeffrey has served with exactly 12 board members. I did, I did the research. So I'll list them right now. You have Janet Benton, Rob Gershaw, Susan Haberman, Jay Shapiro, Greg Resner, who's here, Allison Gardner, Randy Katchis, Victoria Tipp, Karen Visser, myself, Jane Shepherdson, and Holly McCall.
I agree.
12 is like a theme here, okay? So in part of this honor, I'd like, Vicky Tipp would like to say a couple words.
By the way, I asked you guys not to do it.
We're not, but believe me, it's, oh, these eggs and soda and stuff, that's for you and the golf balls. The eggs, I'm not sure I'd eat.
Don't get next to the crowd.
They were my hot car for a while.
I'll take the eggs.
Jeff, I'd like, you know, I just want to acknowledge that in Chappaqua School Board members, I don't think serve as long as in some other districts where they might serve for like 20, 25 years. So 12 years is a really long time for us and so you've got the most experience of anyone, I think, on the school board. You've been nothing but a passionate advocate for our school district. And you've been an advocate for students and you've made a point of always reminding us that there are many, many chapters about students in the district as well. And so you've really represented the entire school district. And you've always shown a deep and unwavering commitment to your position here. You've always fought for strongly held beliefs. You've never hesitated to ask very hard questions. You were never afraid to put yourself up for a challenge. And I remember when you ran for the Bozies position. And I think you knew you were going to lose because we had and have been critical of their way of apportioning costs. And you knew that there'd be campaign against you because it was, we're a minority in that. And I won't go into that whole problem now, but you knew what you were getting yourself into, but you showed absolutely no hesitation in throwing yourself in and I really, really admired you for that. I'm just going to say that you and I have butted heads a little bit over the years, just a little. We've had a lot of disagreements, you and I. And it's kind of made me understand perhaps what it's like to have, you know, an older brother. Because I've never had that. I'm going to say older. But I, despite our disagreements, you know, when things got tough and when it really counted, you were so supportive. And I, and I know that we supported each other during very difficult moments. And I'll never forget that. And I think that your passion and your fearlessness gave me a lot of strength in difficult times. And I, I am going to really miss you very, very much. It's hard to imagine the board without you. And I know this is an inside joke, but I want to say I'm going to also miss Nestor with a lowercase N. I don't know what we're going to do with that guy too. But I always think that an ending is a new beginning. So I'll be interested to see what you do next and I hope you stay in touch.
Thank you very much.
And, so is this the right time?
Yes.
I have something to give you.
You guys don't have to say anything, man.
Oh, we have more.
I do have 13 pastry bottles.
Can you give them a time?
And it's nice that I, I get to do this. As I, I am, at this time, I'm president of the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association. So I get to offer this to you. This is on behalf of the Chappaqua Central School District. The Westchester Putnam School Boards Association is honored to recognize Jeffrey Mester, whose support of public education, commitment to educational excellence, and dedicated leadership has enhanced the quality of education for all of the students in the district. It's dated to 12, 2019. And it's going to be signed by our, our board president, Warren. And it's also signed by Lisa Davis, who is executive director of West Put. And I just have to say as an aside, Lisa Davis was also a member of the Chappaqua School Board. So it really all comes full circle.
I believe Jeffrey took her seat.
I took, I actually retired when I ran for the first time.
So there are a lot of connections here. So here is your recognition certificate, which I'm honored to give you today.
Thank you very much, Warren.
Other members of the board?
Yes, I, I just wanted to say
You guys wrote something too?
Yes. Jeff, I've known Jeff for actually most of the 20 years that, plus the years I've lived in Chappaqua. We, with our families, we've shared football games, poker games, and other social events together, but we really didn't get to work together.
Ex-tinge poker games.
Until, yeah, ex-tinge poker. Until I joined the board two years ago. And what has always struck me about Jeff and is that, I have to put my glasses on. What has struck me about Jeff and his service to this district is really your unwavering integrity. Jeff is passionate about what he believes in, what he believes is best for this district and the residents of this district. And he will fight hard for what he believes in and I appreciate that tremendously. There are a lot of things that Jeff and I have agreed on and some that we haven't. But every position Jeff has taken is well thought out and extremely heartfelt. I just wanted to say that I will miss Jeff's detailed knowledge of all things fiscal and facilities related. I will miss his late night lengthy emails, which I confess, I do not see or read until a reasonable hour in the morning. And I will miss his unique and sharp sense of humor. Jeff, I just want to thank you for your 12 years of service to this community. I truly hope that you will now get a little bit more sleep in the middle of the night. And I hope that whatever you choose to focus your considerable energies on in the years moving forward, that you achieve great success and experience great joy.
Thank you very much.
So I didn't prepare anything written. So I just want to thank you, Jeff, for your years of service to the community and the, and the schools and on this board. It's hard to believe I've only been in Chappaqua for about four years now. But you have been a leadership presence in this district since I got here. From the years I sat in the audience, hoping you'd speak in to the mic a little bit more, to sitting next to you this past year and serving on the facilities committee with you. I've considered you a mentor and I really appreciate the stands that you take for the students, the district, and all of us. I want to thank you for what you've taught me. And I look forward to seeing what you will do next. However, I know that the facilities committee is a bit like the Hotel California and I will see plenty of you because you can't leave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Jeff, it's really hard to articulate how much you've shaped my experience here since becoming a part of this community. You're incredibly smart, I mean, really intelligent. And your ability to craft a missive at 3:00 a.m. cannot be rivaled. You always can present a different perspective, no matter what the issue is. And it reshapes all of our decisions for the better. Your quick wit and your well-placed pun can de-escalate situations when they become hairy. Your ability to network with the community when things are about to go south has been critical as we've dealt with some really significant issues since I've arrived. You're able to take a position, articulate it, and defend it. And this is very much appreciated, even when it's the opposite of mine. The time you spend with our facilities crew, and they're here tonight to speak, and on the committee itself is admirable. You're the only board member I know that would show up at 1:00 a.m. to make sure that people are working on the turf field when they said they would be.
I took a break from my right.
Finally, your support of my family personally, when I transitioned to this community, did not go unnoticed and was very much appreciated. Chappaqua is a more progressive and stronger district today when compared with where it was 12 years ago and that is a direct result of your leadership. We will be forever grateful to you and your family for supporting your, your decision to be on the Board of Education in our district. And I just want to thank you on behalf of all of us who work here for being a part of our, our school district for the past 12 years and for your leadership. And we've made something for you, for you to
Well, thank you.
Put somewhere in your home. This is one of my best moments with you. When you had the, we dedicated the game ball to you on our first game on the turf field.
We created a picture plaque for you. John, you wanted to make a few comments and then I'll invite Joe up?
Yes.
Okay.
And believe it or not, I actually saw John McCarthy this afternoon. And he really was very, very sincere. He said that he's going to miss you. He said you have been a very, very good supporter of Bozies. He'd been challenged, but your heart is definitely at the right place. But with Jeff, I'm going to miss you. And I always say that we, we came together. So unfortunately, I'm not going with you.
Well, let's take a supportive that is from.
You know, Jeff, you're always committed to this district and all the students. And you're always supportive and you always have our backs. You always provide wise advice and you're just always there. And we truly miss you. And we will welcome you to the retired board member depository, the facilities committee.
Joe?
Joe?
Joe and Jim?
Jimmy?
You guys are going to speak too?
Not only did Joe, is Joe going to speak, he waited until 9:30 with Jim.
Jim, you should come up too.
Yes, come up, Jim, you waited all this time.
Jim, come on. First know that Jim is here in his own time.
You know, when I when I first started thinking about speaking tonight, I thought of this as a roast. So I started saying all these jokes about you. And then when I read them to Jim, Jim goes, you cannot say that in front of a store. So I had to throw that away. The facilities department, we have a gift for you that we wanted to give you for all of your support. And yes, Jim came here, I didn't even have to offer him overtime. He willingly came tonight to be here. To say that you are an advocate for the facility department is really an understatement. You've done so many things for us and some of them, you know, you, you took the time to learn everything that we were doing and took an interest in it. And when there was a question, you came to the garage and you asked us and you really came across like you really cared about the department and that was so important to us. I really believe, you know, you were such an advocate on the infrastructure projects. And I really believe I wouldn't have got half of them in there if it wasn't for you. So I owe that to you. One of the most important things that'll stand out to us was, you know, you coming over to the garage and just talking to the guys, you know, seeing how things are going. And, you know, Jeff would come there in the middle of a storm, a snowstorm, when we, when the schools were closed to see how we're doing and how it's going. And that helped me immensely with the morale department. Everyone in my department knew that you had our back. And that was really important to us. So we're really going to miss you. I will miss those times where you come to the, to the building to see me at the end of the day on a Friday when I've already packed my stuff and I'm ready to get in the truck. But no, seriously, I will
I need to stop talking for you.
Yes, and then when you sit there for an hour. But I will miss that. I enjoyed the conversations and, you know, one thing you always, you know, we would talk business, but you always asked about personal things in my life. And I really did appreciate your friendship and I'm really going to miss you. The guys at the garage wanted me to let you know that it's still Friday. We wash the trucks at 3:00. Come on over. So we wanted to give you this gift and hopefully we have enough time for you to just open it really quickly.
Yeah, of course we do.
I really brought Jim to carry, it's really heavy.
You got the buttons. Oh my gosh. There?
Yes.
Who wrapped this?
It wasn't Jim and I. I asked Jim to bring wrapping paper. He brought not enough to do one side of it.
Mary wrapped it.
Apparently it's in a Granger box.
It's not, it's not what's in the Granger? Open enough boxes to do that? Oh my gosh. Joe taped it.
All, all this has been excess.
Road flares. All right, that's it, that's it, it's another minute?
For security reasons, we're not allowed to have that. One of the fumables.
A whistle, that's an emergency whistle, just like
What is this whistle? I always have it. Wow. Flashlight?
Yeah, the LED flashlight. That's a wired up radio and, yeah, it's an emergency. Got that from the emergency closet. Work sunglasses.
Oh, those are great. Those look great.
Safety sunglasses.
Yes.
Those are safety sunglasses.
Those are amazing.
Bottle caps on him in the eye. Hey, you got that. Another multi-tool?
Yeah, they're boxed out.
Okay.
Put that on the outside of the box.
There's a lot here, a blanket.
That's an emergency blanket.
This is, this is one of my favorite pieces.
Turf, turf.
That's the, uh
You worked hard for that.
No, we cut the actual, extra turf.
This is like freeze dried water? Just add water? I mean, what is that?
That's from the emergency closet that we have. So in there is emergency water, toothbrush, anything you needed in an emergency.
Where were you last?
Keep it in your truck. This is kept in your truck.
Oh, wow.
Inside there is the, is the info on the turf.
Oh. I've got enough of that stuck to the bottom.
You can have your own field, Jeffrey.
And then this thing?
Oh, that's just a water, a water bottle, yeah. We can't get rid of those things. All right, so that is from CSEA. Just so you know, I don't even get one of those. You see it says CSEA on the side of it. They, they
That's the maintenance.
That's nice.
And then we get another winter jacket. So when we come visit us, we, you know
In the snowstorm.
Oh, Joe, that was really nice.
Thank you so much.
A little more, a little more of this is your hour, Jeffrey. Some of your some of your, some of your previous, our previous board members who you've got to serve with are here to say something. So Karen?
This is your life.
Or Greg? So Greg Resner served on the board, I don't know the exact years.
11 years ago.
11 years ago, there you go.
2008, 2011.
There we go.
Hi. I'm here to thank you tonight and I had the privilege of serving Jeffrey in his first and second term on the school board. And I want to thank you for your commitment. I want to thank you for how hard you work. And I want to thank you for your commitment. I want to thank you for how hard you work. I want to thank you for how much you care and for working so hard for everybody in the district, students, professionals, teachers, all of us. 12 years is- I'm daunted by the long journey of your service. It's incredible. I'm awed at it. It's amazing. The 12 years of service also is 12 years of your life. It's an enormously large part of your life. So I know that comes with incredible sacrifice. That commitment is extraordinary. So I want to tell you that my kids are better for your service, we as a family are better for your service, and I'm incredibly grateful for all that you did. So thank you really for everything.
Thank you.
Karen Visser, served six years with Greg, with Jeffrey.
Half a dozen.
Karen Visser, 2011 to 2017. I'm not gonna put these damn things on. Okay, and I'm gonna read my paper. So I have to be honest, this was one of the hard ones to write. "So much to say and not enough time to really do justice to your contributions to our school community. But please humor me as I represent a view from the board." For those who don't know, that is names of Jeff's personal blog. So let's begin with Jeff's first campaign slogan from 12 years ago. "I want to note that my boys were in kindergarten. They are going to be rising seniors in the fall." Jeff Mester School Board, "Common sense with an uncommon commitment." This was Jeff's statement in Newcastle Now. Does anybody remember that publication? Do you remember who gave you the interview?
What's that?
Do you remember who gave you that interview?
Who gave you that interview? Wasn't it Christine?
No, it was Susie Pender. Yeah, may she rest in peace. Her statement then was, "A person who can make practical and reasonable decisions. A person who is flexible and can balance competing community interests. A person with creativity, vision, and conviction. I am that person."
I was gonna say, Susan didn't say that. I think I said it.
With that winning statement, you began your journey with the Board of Education, and you have served four consecutive terms. No small feat or achievement. You have had the privilege of being, serving as the Board's president twice and sat on every board committee. I think once you mentioned that your favorite committee was the Wellness Committee most of all. And by the way, to all that don't know that, this is that we in the Board lovingly call it the Cupcake Killing Committee. All kidding aside, I hope that you, in your spare time, that you will remain on the beloved and fun Facilities Committee. As we know, this is where all past board members come to reside, except Greg, who hasn't joined us yet, but will. You always said that being on the board, being a board member, was a very rewarding way to serve the community. It was at times very trying and experience. Occasionally, members of the public forgot that we were volunteers and not paid politicians. I applaud Jeff and you, and all of you who are committing to serve this community through the good times in the bad. Where's our newest board member?
There she is.
I just want to let you know there's gonna be no finer group of people that you will be serving with, so good luck to you. Jeff, I know that you served with, to represent all the community and the best interests of everyone. But let's face it, it was the kids that ended up as winners. So thank you for all your years of dedicated, unwavering support for the kids of this community. With all the new time on your hands, I have no doubt that you will be rooting for your Yankees, Giants, Rangers, and your beloved Chicago Bulls. Now that you won't have time to be preparing for meetings, running around making sure our facilities meet our high standards of excellence, you'll be having time to read those long overdue biographies and nonfiction books that you have been waiting to crack open. And I also know that you love to cook and eat, so Mark and I are looking forward to finally having you over for dinner. There are no more excuses that you have something to do for the board. I know your children, Annie, Brett, and AJ, used to be embarrassed when you would mention their names in public. But I have to say, when you did mention their names, it was always with beating pride. They are all grown now, but we all know that they're fabulous kids. You did a great job. You not only wanted the best for your kids, but you always wanted the best for all kids to succeed. I know it is with deep sense of obligation that you provide a stimulating and enriching environment for all children and that you serve doing this as a board member. So 12 years ago, Jeff's first campaign slogan, "Common sense with an uncommon commitment." Yes, indeed, it was dedicated and longstanding commitment during which you provided our community with a passionate leadership and sage advice. The sacrifice of your time and talents has made a deep and lasting contribution to the families of our district. You most certainly kept your election promise. Jeff, your last campaign slogan. "I may be last alphabetically on this panel, but first in our hearts." That, my dear friend, will always be-
That was enough to cuff anymore.
Okay. So with that, best wishes to in your next chapter in your life. I personally look forward to hearing all about your adventures. Congratulations.
So Randy couldn't be here, but he said, "Tell Jeffrey I want to grab him a great beer so we can talk about after Board of Education retirement." Jay sent me a little note, asked me to read this. "Warren, I'm very sorry, but I cannot be there on Wednesday evening because of a travel commitment. However, I'd like you to read this for Jeffrey." Jeffrey and I served for, this is Jay Shapiro. Jeffrey and I served for three wonderful and important years. During one of those years when I was president, Jeff supported me as we held to a 0% budget increase. Jeff and I ran together, as you, Warren, had the pleasure to do. And it was a pleasure. Jeff and I were united in our objective to represent the most important constituents in the district, the students. Whether it was the protection of the students' privacy or their right to high-quality education, public education, Jeffrey placed their interests at the top of the list. Jeffrey respects education and the institution of our district. There was a period of time when Jeff would drive me to school board meetings from midtown Manhattan where we both worked. During those rides, Jeff and I would speak passionately about the issues that we were dealing with at that time on the board. I loved being caught up in his enthusiasm, I confess. I also appreciated how he distracted me from this ability to move his pickup truck between two other cars in a small mill, even though, as we know, there's only, it's only a too-lane highway. We were never late. I was impressed how Jeff never, ever let his personal, professional life interfere with his energy and willingness to serve. Our daughters are long gone from Greeley, so I don't know if the course teaching poetry of Bob Marley has been offered yet. But I leave you with this Bob Marley quote, "Live for yourself and you will live in vain. Live for others and you will live again." That says it about, that says it all about Jeff's devotion and dedication to CCSD. I'm proud to call Jeffrey my friend and so happy that he is my colleague, Jay. One more. Okay, this is from Allison. Remember we were talking about dozens and how things break apart? Well, you served with Karen and I for half of your time. You served with Vicky for two-thirds, and you served with Allison for three-quarters. Nine years. So Allison Gardner, "While I cannot be there in person, I would not let this important-" I'm gonna laugh at this one. This is, I've read this a couple times, so I wouldn't do it, but I will. "So I would not let this important event pass without adding my two cents to Jeff's own."
Two cents I'm waiting for.
Right. "Let's pretend it's 6:00 AM. I get up to start the morning chaos of early kids getting ready for school and myself ready for work. I check my emails, and there blinking in my inbox is a tome from Jeff sent at some ungodly hour. The writing is prosaic, the vocabulary is elevated, the argument is carefully laid out, and after reading, okay, sometimes skimming, the three single-spaced pages I find in the classic Mester sign-off, 'Just my two cents.'" "This was my life for nine years. Jeffrey Mester has been a near constant presence in my life since the day I was first elected to the board. He immediately reached out to welcome me and offered sage advice, pearls of wisdom, and a heavy dose of Mesterisms. Over the years, I've come to know Jeff as a dedicated public servant and steadfast steward of taxpayer monies. He cares about the bottom line, but cares even more about the students for whom these monies mean a high quality of education. Jeffrey never turned a blind eye on an issue that impacted students. He was always available to listen, to debate, and sometimes even argue. But through our shared tenure, Jeff and I never let a disagreement keep us from respecting one another because we know that both one, that we both have one common goal, delivering the best possible education to the students of our district. Our ability to disagree in a respectful and civil manner allowed us to work hard towards our shared goal. Being on the board is not easy. It requires a lot of attention and time. You spend countless hours together grappling with important issues. The people you serve with become so familiar that if you don't hear from them one day or two, you start to worry. But being on the board with Jeff is not just about work. Jeff quickly became a wonderful friend. I mean, how many friends would help me move twice? We shared the trials and tribulations of parenting. We shared family milestones and health scares. We shared about our professional lives. He was a sounding board and a patient ear on any and all topics. Perhaps the biggest adjustment to post-Board of Education life has been the knowledge that I would no longer wake to find a Nestor blast in my email."
I can fix that.
I must say, I do miss that a lot. "I want to thank Jeff for his 12 years of tireless service to the district. You gave so much of yourself to this role and helped ensure a rigorous education for thousands of students. The impacts of your tenure will be felt for years to come and that you should be truly proud of. Best of luck in your future endeavors, my friend, and remember, the caravan moves on." We're not done. We've got one more. I get, you can take the last one. I get to say something though, because I haven't heard they say anything. I'm just reading.
I wish I'd heard this before I go up and write.
Um, you might not get to-
It's on the fly editing.
I gotta pull something up here for-
We might be here 3:00 AM.
So you know the song? Okay, I was gonna play the whole thing, but I have to stop. Okay, so when we join the school board, we join as individuals wanting to make a difference in our district for the benefit of the children of our community and the members, voters of our community. After we're on the board, we understand there are only four other people along with us that have board membership in common, and that though we become board members as individuals, we do build trust and friendship through the many- Did I say many? Hours, thousands of hours that Jeffrey has probably put in, that we work together on behalf of the community. One of the first things I remember when I think about Jeffrey is his openness and kindness. I will never forget the day petitions were due at 5:00 PM, six years ago, when I first ran for the board. And about five minutes after 5:00 PM, I'm walking to my garage, and I get this call from a number I really wasn't familiar with. I know the number pretty well now. Probably could, I wouldn't give it over in the blink. I answered the voice, I answered, and the voice on the phone said, "Hi, I'm Jeffrey Mester." And he was congratulating me for running and letting me know that even though it was a contested election, that he would be happy to help me in any way, answer any questions. Things are unbelievable. I do that now when I'm running, either against candidates or if I'm not running, you know, if I'm not running, and petitions, after petitions are opened. I want to extend and pay forward what Jeffrey gave to me, his act of kindness to new candidates. The main reason I'm saying this is because I hope, and I'll say this for the board members, I've been fortunate to serve with Jeffrey and learn, yes, we're all lifelong learners. Many things from Jeffrey. Although we don't agree on many things, that seems to be a theme too. We do, although we agree on many things, almost everything, we don't agree on some things. As a community, you don't want that. You don't want board members just agreeing on everything. You want us to work through the issues and have discussions, and we've had many hard discussions. But there's always been a mutual respect for each other and our opinions. Over the past six years, we have become friends. We've confided in each other, shared successes and sadness, spoken about family, sports, health issues, especially Jeffrey, that should never, and, you know, Jeffrey told me I should never play ultimate frisbee again because about three years ago I broke myself in half. And I usually remind him that he's still playing softball, and that's probably not a good thing either. And our love of music, you can hear, we sort of have similar music in common. So the song that I was playing was by a band we both enjoy, The Grateful Dead. It's called Broke Down Palace. I thought some of the lyrics are very poignant, where they say, "Fairly well." So you've heard a lot of the same themes here. Jeffrey's been a pleasure to work with on the board. He's become a friend to all of us. His work ethic is unstoppable. You know, now it's, it's like true confessions. I did sometimes send emails a little late because I wanted to see, is he gonna be, he'll read this and send me back something later? And yeah, he did. You can never beat him at the email. But he's always made a decision, he's always made his decisions for the benefit of the district and the community. Your 12 years of service to our community will be a great part of your life legacy. I won't miss you, my friend, fairly well.
That's gonna match this.
So along with he takes, here's one of them. This is from the entire board.
Can I open it now?
Yeah. It's thematic also.
It's a box.
Yeah, you shouldn't smash. Don't smash that one. I'd also like to thank, I'd also like to thank the community who's sitting here, listening to us talk about this. We usually work on moving our boards forward, but this is something we have to do because it's important. When one of us serves for so long, to recognize them. I must have taped it. So if you read, if you read the bottom, what's it?
Fairly well.
Fairly well.
Awesome.
That's, yeah, it's from Soldier Field from 2015, and you were at their last show.
Sometimes I was on a show last night at the Capitol Field, your last appearance. Exactly, and you're my-
So that's all we have, Jeffrey. Are we ready to move on with the business, or would you like to say something?
You know, I'm actually considering not saying what I said. First, I gotta say, it must be really dusty in the room. There's something in my eye. I'm not a sentimental person, but I really do appreciate everything everybody said. And I also have to say a few things before I read what I wrote. To be honest, I procrastinated writing this because I really didn't want to have to write it. So I procrastinated until this afternoon, so it's a little long-winded. I didn't have a chance to edit it, but it is what it is. First, I want to thank people who are here in person, especially the PTA, who've been here for me, but for the district. Every time I've been here, they've been here, and that's a lot. That's a real lot. Thank you to Greg and Karen for coming out, truly. That's a love and beyond. You could have just written something like- Melvin, and I appreciate that. And I also appreciate Jim and Joe for coming, who also, on their own time, and, yeah, didn't have to be here. Really, what you guys said really means a lot to me. I asked Warren and Christine if I could have a few minutes, and I may have undersold that, by the way, to make some final remarks as a board member. Apologies upfront if this is more like a speech than a feeling marks. It could be worse than, all the, these guys have stolen all my lines. It could be worse. It could be one of my late-night, early-morning email rants. I asked that I be put as far back on the agenda as practical. I did not want to be lumped in with the retirees. I am not retiring. I would love to do this for another three years. When I ran for a fifth term, I ran to win. I did not. The voter spoke. Before I ran this time, I consulted with a lot of people. A lot of people encouraged me with thoughts like, "We need independent thinkers. We need people who are dedicated. We need a diverse and thought board." Some people discouraged me from running. Why not go out on top? Go out as a winner. What if you lose? Your legacy will be tainted. Well, I don't think my legacy is tainted, but that's for others to judge. It just occurred to me. I'm still learning here, you know? Well, I do not think my legacy is tainted, but that's for others to judge. Quite frankly, and those, and those who know me know, I do not care. What I care about is doing the right thing. What I care about is doing the right thing regardless of the consequences and what people think. What I care about is the district, the students, the faculty, the staff, the administration, the parents, and all the taxpayers. If I had to choose my legacy, it would be that I did it my way, 100% effort, 100% of the time. I was willing to question the status quo. I never compromised my principles. When drafting these remarks, I could not help but think, the students graduating this Sunday and I grew up together. They were in first grade, my first year on the board. They grew as young men, woman and man, and I grew as an old man and board member. Grow and learn we did. And if, pardon me if I slip into graduation remarks, remarks for a few seconds, I urge the graduates to be inquisitive, to be curious, and to be lifelong learners. And now I start going into real speech. President Obama in May of 2017, while speaking to a crowd in Milan, Italy, said, "The mark of a good leader is somebody who is able to empower other people. So often we think of leadership as somebody at the top who is ordering other people around." But it turns out, for me at least, and me too, what made me understand leadership was when I could see somebody who thought they didn't have a voice, they thought they didn't have influence, they didn't have power, and teach them how they could speak up on the things that would affect in their lives. People have a tendency to blame politicians when things don't work, but as I always tell the people, you get the politicians you deserve. I could not have said it better myself. I sought to give the community voice, transparency, and complete and direct answers. I sought to do what was in the best interest of the community. I took to heart what John F. Kennedy said in his remarks to the Sigma Delta Chi Journalism Fraternal Dinner in 1955. He said, "I cannot believe that the people of Massachusetts sent me to Washington to serve merely as a seismograph, to record the ups and downs of popular opinion. I believe instead that those of us in public office were elected not because the people believed we would be bound by their every indulged impulse, regardless of the conclusions directed by our own deliberations, but because they had confidence in our judgment and our ability to exercise that judgment from a position where we could determine what were in the best interest of the voters and part of the best interest of the nation." I was gonna come up with a quote from President Trump here, but I don't think I could say that in public. "I am deeply concerned that the board not become political." I checked him down. "I am deep, I am deeply concerned that the board not become political, that board members are not seen as Democrats or Republicans, not seen as advocates for any one special interest group, and not be beholden to any constituency. I am deeply concerned that non-partisan groups will continue a trend and become more partisan." Franz Kafka once said or wrote, "There is hope, but not for us." I disagree. I have hope. I have confidence. I believe that we are, as a district, are on solid footing. I have worked with Vicky, Warren, Jane, and Holly. I have full confidence that they will continue to be guided by, in their own way, to do what their good judgment says is in the best interest of the community. While we may not have always agreed, and that we seem to agree in that, I rest comfortably knowing that the four of you have always carefully thought out the issues and have asked the right questions. I rest comfortably knowing that our faculty is our biggest asset. Our teachers are caring, knowledgeable, and damn good at what they do. While the district's most precious asset is our staff, the community trusts its most precious asset, our children, to the teachers, administrators, and staff every day, for good reason. I have spent 12 years as a member of the Facilities Committee. I have intimate knowledge of our custodial and maintenance staff. Not only are they hard-working and good at what they do, they are caring and compassionate people who always put the students first. Thank you to Jim and Mario and all the members of the unit in the pole barn and at the schools. A special thank you to Joe Grumondo, who is Director of Facilities. Joe has turned that department into a professional one. I could go on and on about Joe and the department, but let me just thank Joe and acknowledge that Joe is more than a Director of Facilities, he is a friend. I rest comfortably knowing that building leadership teams are just that, leaders, not just principals and assistant principals. Rather than risk leaving someone out, I thank all the building administrators, current and past, with whom I've had the pleasure to work, even the ones who I yelled at as a parent. And, and you know who that is, if you're listening. I want to thank the Ed Center, Jim. I want to. I'm sorry. I want to thank the Ed Center staff. Your welcoming smile and willingness to help a new and experienced board member with what to do, where to go, and how things work was invaluable to me. Again, I cannot name everyone, but I do want to thank Blanche, Mike, David, and Mary, with whom I've had the most contact. I also want to thank and acknowledge the terrific working, work being done by Jamie and Josh. While most of us not community-facing, know that they're the engine of academic innovation and progress. Their enthusiasm for teaching and learning is contagious. I also want to thank Jason, the engine of our athletic innovation and progress. Of course, I want to thank John, Tony, and Adam. John and I started in the district at pretty much the same time. I think I beat him by a month, and he never lets me forget that. I struggle with how to word this, but besides being the best assistant superintendent for finance and business administration and operations and whatever else it is he does, John is, in the truest sense of the words, a good man. He is, his steadiness presence, his sense of humor, his compassion and caring have been a constant source of hope. I always told him that the, the day he left would be the day before I left. As a board member, our biggest role is financial oversight. John is my salmonex. I sleep well at night knowing John was at the helm.
You sleep at night or not? You send emails?
I sleep fast. From four to seven. As a board member, our biggest role is financial oversight. John is my salmonex. I sleep well at night knowing John was at the helm. I look forward to lunches at Friends at Spoon for years to come. Tony and Adam, I do not know as long and thus as well, but I think they too are the best at what they do. They too are good men. The word of the night is thanks, and I have worked in it, it ain't a lot tonight. Thank you both. Stay the course. I have confidence in and admiration and respect for Christine. Thank you. A wise former board member told me that a board should hire the superintendent, the expert, and then stay out of the way and let them do their job. I feel totally, totally comfortable letting Christine run the district. Her knowledge, work ethic, and enthusiasm is superior to any superintendent with whom I have worked. She is a true leader by any definition. The district is in great hands with her at the helm and with the entire team she has assembled. Lisa, merci beaucoup. That's the extent of my French, and she speaks French. Uh, gracias. A board, a board member can never be successful without the support of the district clerk. Behind every great board member is the district clerk. Not only is Lisa, Lisa helpful and supportive, she's level-headed, has a great sense of perspective, and an even better sense of humor. And she embraces my quirks. Thank you, Lisa. While I'm, while I'm on the subject, I want to thank my fellow board members, Vicky, Warren, Jane, and Holly, as well as all the board members with whom I have served, and hopefully I get this right, Jay, Rob, Janet, Susan, Randy, Greg, Allison, and Karen. I am proud to serve with you all, even proud to say that I can accurately call you all my friends. I want to thank the community. Thank you for electing me four times and for letting me serve. Thank you for your support, your questions, and even your ire. Thank you to the basement boys, which won't mean anything to you all. Finally, I want to thank my, it's a shout-out to my friends on Sundays. Anyway, finally, I want to thank my family, my children, Annie, Brett, and AJ. Their understanding of, appreciation for, and patience with my board service is and was the one thing that made this possible, and quite frankly, personally worthwhile. I could go on about what they have said about being the children of a sitting board member, but I won't. Suffice it to say that they took the good with the bad, never once complaining or asking for any special treatment. I also want to thank Vicky, and I say this as my Vicky, for recognizing my board service was a passion, something I cared so deeply about, a commitment for which there is no compromise. The dogs bark, but the caravan moves on. Thank you.
Okay. Again.
And thank you to members of the community who stayed and didn't realize that it was gonna go on for a while. Taylor.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Um.
All right. We could do a, what do you call those things?
Consent agenda.
The consent agenda.
I just laughed.
No, no, I do not.
Oh, my gosh.
I do not.
Okay. All right. Um, approvals and ratifications. Uh, 3.1, can I get a motion for 3.1 be resolved, Board of Education, Board of Education? Actually, let me take 3.1, 3.2 together, that we accept the minutes of May 29th and June 4th special board meetings together.
I will move. Second?
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Policy 6030, district use of credit card, fifth reading and adoption.
Let's do this thing.
Be resolved, Board of Education hereby adopts policy 6030, district use of credit card. We had a special meeting on June 4th.
Special work session.
Special work session, and we, uh, hashed that out a lot for quite a while. So here's our latest revision. Are there any questions regarding, or first, can I get a motion to, uh?
I, I move, uh, item 3.3.
Can I second that one?
Yes, Holly, you can second that one. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, but not what you think.
Okay.
I, I, I will, I will be voting now with a general objection to the concept of thing. I can, I would like to thank all the board members who put in such hard work to make this such a limiting, um, policy as to be almost impractical, so I thank you all.
All right. Um, any other additional discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Four to one. Policies adopted.
Oh, we're gonna table the next one.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody, for your hard work.
I'd like to ta, um, I'd like to table item, uh, 3.4, policy 4055. We have a little more work to do on that. Um, I'd like a motion to accept, do I have to do anything with table? No. Table, thank you. I'd like a motion to accept, uh, item 3.5, policy 3010, code of ethics, second reading and adoption. Do I have a motion for 3.5?
I'll move 3.5.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I move, we accept the superintendent's recommendation of item 4.1 as presented.
I will second that. 4.1. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I move, we accept the recommendation again of item 4.2 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Item 5.1 and 5.2, uh, can I have a motion to accept the CFC summary as reported to the board on June 12th, 2019?
I move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Item 5.3, be resolved, Board of Education, in accordance with valid policy 9040, hereby authorizes the 2019-2020 school year salaries of non-aligned administrators of the school district who are not representative of collective bargaining units as recommended by the superintendent of schools in a memorandum to the Board of Education dated June 4th, 2019. Said memorandum is incorporated by reference into the minutes of this meeting. I will move 5.3. Do I have a second?
Yes, I say.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Item 5.4, be resolved, Board of Education hereby authorizes the 2019-2020 school year salaries of the confidential employees as recommended by the superintendent in a memorandum to the Board of Education dated June 4th, 2019. Said memorandum is incorporated by reference into the minutes of this meeting.
I move item 5.4.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
5.1, 5.5, be resolved, Board of Education hereby authorizes the 2019-2020 school year salary for the Director of Continuing Education as recommended by the superintendent in a memorandum to the Board of Education dated June 4th, 2019. Said memorandum is incorporated by reference in the minutes of the meeting. I will move 5.5. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Can I ask, this position is a point, point what? Can you, can you remind us? Point six?
Is it point six?
It's a point six.
Yes.
And therefore is eligible for benefits.
For benefits.
Okay. I just want to make that very clear.
Yes.
It's a point six eligible for benefits.
That's correct.
Okay. We had a question, so I want to clarify.
So it's 25 hours, so it's.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 5.4, 5.6, be resolved, Board of Education approves agreement for services with Greg Dunlop Interprep for world language consultant, consultative service during the school year 2019-2020 at a rate of $3,100 per day, not to exceed six days, and authorizes the board president to execute this agreement. Do I have a motion for item 5.6?
I move. Second?
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? Item 5.7, be resolved, Board of Education approves agreement for services with Shelley de Bla, refined processes, practices consulting for professional math instructional support during the school year 2019-2020 at a rate of $2,400 per day, not to exceed 20 days, and authorizes the board president to execute this agreement. Do I have a motion for 5.7?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second?
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. 5.8, I want to read something about 5.8. 5.8, be resolved, Board of Education hereby approves the recommendation of our audit committee to accept, one, the internal audit report of the health, employee health benefits and capital projects, including response to the reports by the district, and two, the GAZB-75 report for the year ending June 30th, 2019. And one part of that report I wanted to read, because we got a letter from.
Well, first, I, I move 5.8.
Okay, go ahead. Do a second.
Second.
Um, thank you, Vicky. Uh, we received an anonymous letter regarding health benefits to employee, but based on our internal audits as test results, we have reviewed all of district's current employees, full-time and part-time, who are receiving health benefits to determine whether they met contractual, the contractual minimum, minimum eligibility. We determined that they all did. Any other discussion? All in favor of 5.8? Aye.
Aye.
5.9, be resolved, Board of Education authorizes establishment of the SJK Award in Scholarship for the Pursuit of Scientific Facts in Honor and Remembrance of Sam Sabrina Kaplan, Class of 2019. Do I have a motion for 5.9?
I move 5.9.
Do I have a second for 5.9?
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
I just want to say, um, thank you for the, establishing the award.
Um, item 5.10, all in favor? Aye. Item 5.10, be resolved, Board of Education approves an agreement for health and welfare services with the city, school district, and your shell for three students at the rate of $1,208 per student effective September 5th, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, and authorizes the board president, superintendent, and district clerk to execute this agreement. I will move 5.10. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Item 5.11, be resolved, Board of Education approves the independent evaluation agreement with Dr. Stephanie O'Leary and Dr. Laura West Snyder of Western Psychological Services for the independent comprehensive psychoeducational and neurophysiological evaluation of student for the independent comprehensive psychoeducational and neurophysiological evaluation of student number 701371 in the amount of, not to exceed, not to exceed $2,900, and authorizes the board president to execute this agreement. I will move item 5.11. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. 5.12, be resolved, Board of Education approves contract for independent contractor services with Laura Campania as performing arts assistant for the school year 2019-2020 at $25 an hour, not to exceed $15,000 annually, and authorizes the board president to execute this agreement. Do I have a motion for 5.12?
I move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Be resolved, item 5.13, be resolved, Board of Education approves the contract for independent contractor services with Technical Directions LLC to engage the services for technical operations for the Performing Arts Center PAC at Seven Bridges Middle School for the school year 2019-2020 at $60 per hour, the four-hour minimum per van, not to exceed $20,000 annually, and authorizes the board president to execute this agreement. Do I have a motion for 5.13?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Item 5.14, be resolved, Board of Education approves CCSD bid award B 2019-13 Educational Data Services, various categories recommended award to various vendors, a total of $202,007.45 for the 2019-2020 school year. Do I have a motion for 5.14?
I move 5.14.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I'd like to table 5.15. We have a little more work to do on that. Item 5.16, be resolved, Board of Education approves CCSD bid award B 2019-10, door hardware and door replacement recommended renewal award Hudson Valley Door and Hardware, and the average hourly, hourly rate of $151.25 per hour, and the average charge for parts based on 20 parts of $480.37 per hour, or, I'm sorry, per part, for parts, for the 2019-2020 school year. I will move 5.16. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Does that, would anyone object to taking 5.17 to?
I'm going to take, I'd like to take 17, 517 through 521 together. These are all bids. So do I have a motion to accept 5.17, 5.18, 5.19, 5.20, and 5.21 together?
I move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. I have to go back to the other. 5.22, be it resolved, Board of Education appoints Pat Lewis Patrick as hearing officer pursuant